Good afternoon, everyone. Thursday, January 2nd, 2025. Hard to believe. To see everyone here with us today. Like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Hope everyone had a great Christmas holiday. And so at this time, we'll call the organizational meeting of the Franklin County Board of Supervisors to order. And I would request that Supervisor Nick Mitchell offer our invocation today, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Lori Smith. So if we could all stand, please. Supervisor Mitchell.
Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks for being here. Dear Lord, we ask you be with us. Give us wisdom in choosing the future and the direction of this board. And Lord, just thank you for our many blessings. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'd ask County Attorney Jim Gwynn if he would like to open the floor for nominations for chairperson. So I'll, I guess, hand this mic over to Mr. Gwynn.
Did you say "like to"?
I did say "like to."
Thank you very much, Chris. As usual at this time, and I guess it's my role as both parliamentary and county attorney, it's my responsibility to get a chairman elected. So with that in mind, what I will do now is open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Franklin County. Mr. Page.
Okay, Mr. Gwynn, out of respect to Chairman Thompson, I'd like to nominate Ronnie Thompson.
So we have a nomination for Ronnie Thompson. Are there any other nominations? No more nominations? All right. Hearing none, I'll declare the nomination's closed. And if someone will make a motion to elect Mr. Thompson?
I'll make a motion that we elect Mr. Thompson Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, I think we can do this by acclamation. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? Got what you need, Amy?
Okay.
I'm happy to turn, very happy to turn the meeting over.
As I am. So Chairman Thompson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank each and every one of you all for your support and for your confidence. I certainly hope that this year's a lot better than it was last year, especially at the Thompson household. And I appreciate everyone's generosity and the prayers and the visits. It's just been overwhelming, and I appreciate that. So at this time, I will open the floor for a vice chair. And is there any nominations for that?
I'll nominate Lori Smith.
All right. Any more? I know the chair generally doesn't do this, but I'm going to nominate Tim Tatum for vice chair. We got any more? All right, with the nominations closed, we'll open them off. Somebody want to make a nomination for Lori Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I think what we could do, and what we've done in the past-
Just do the seconds.
-is call by the roll and have each person just vote for who they're going to vote for.
All right, if that's the best way to do it. Madam Clerk, we do a roll call and then just the supervisors just say who they want to vote for.
Supervisor Jamison?
Tim Tatum.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Lori.
Supervisor Carter?
Supervisor Smith.
Supervisor Smith?
Myself.
Supervisor Quinn? Supervisor Tatum?
Myself.
And Chairman Thompson?
Supervisor Tatum.
So that is four for Lori Smith and three for Tim Tatum.
All right, now we need to set the meeting dates and times. If you look at attachment one in the folder here. All right, setting of the, where on? All right, on page one, the proposed meeting dates, they're pretty much the same as we've been doing. The first, I mean, the third Tuesday and then the first Tuesday after the third, I mean, the first Thursday after the third Tuesday. I'll say it right in a minute. All right, is that suitable for everybody? Is there anything need to be changed on that?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add that I know I pushed hard for this to change the schedule to accommodate me to be able to get to them on time. And my situation has since changed. If the board wants to change that back to the way it used to be, it would be, I'm fine with it either way. But my situation has changed and I'm able to get here at a better time. That would be up to everybody else. It's fine with me either way.
All right, what Nick was saying, that if we wanted to go back to the 1:30 and have everything at 1:30 and just meet once a month, that would suit him. But that suits him, that's what he's saying. But what about the rest of y'all? I don't care either way.
Mr. Chairman, I would be fine to meet everyone's time requirements.
Say that again.
I said I'm fine with whatever the board decides-
Okay.
-whether it's 1:30 or 3:00. I do think we ought to reserve that, still that Thursday for work sessions. It does turn into a very long day when we try to do 1:30 till 9:00 or 10:00 at night. So I guess what I'm saying in summary, I don't mind changing the afternoon time. I still would like to have our Thursday work session dates.
We, I remember when I first come on board, we had a Thursday, the Thursdays were reserved for a second meeting for work sessions and everything. And it worked out really well. It worked out really well. What about the rest of you?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy either way, but I think I'd like to hear from staff if this, the way we're doing it now is creating more work, more scheduling and harder on them. I'm fine with going back to the way we used to do it, meet at 1:30, but I think we should consider staff in our decision.
Chris?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in terms of the meeting schedule, and I think I shared with you all last year and then again this year, reflective of this last year, meeting two times in one week, you know, whether we have the super-long meeting on the Tuesday, you know, that also can impose challenges for staff, just as it is Thursday. I know that's a very long meeting for the board on the Tuesday. But I will say on the Thursday, work sessions, you know, as needed. I think we've had those as needed previously. When we had the Tuesday meeting, sometimes we would do a work session in the afternoon on that Tuesday. Inevitably, though, a lot of times, we were compressed with the time on the Tuesday for the adequate work session. So I think that was some of the consensus of the board last year, or maybe some of the sentiment, I should say, is why we went to the Thursday. It really, in terms of putting the work together, and this is Chris speaking, so I don't necessarily want to speak on behalf of the administrative staff, but I really did not necessarily see a difference in the amount of work because it's all in the same week. So when we prepare for the third Tuesday of the month, we're also preparing for the third Thursday. And so, I don't know if that's a definitive answer, Mr. Carter, we made it work this year, we will make it work again. I really think, from a staff perspective, there's not that much of a difference that I've seen between having it Tuesdays and Thursdays, or just the Super Tuesday. It's really a matter for the board. Because I'm putting it back on you guys, passing the ball back, back to the board, because that's, you know, that's two days for you guys as well.
I thought you were going to ask the clerk. I kind of agree with Chris. I think at this point, we've made it work where we can schedule both in the same week. And if we don't need that Thursday, then we have that flexibility to not have the meeting. It is good, I think, to have two meetings in the month, just because it gives us a little more opportunity. So I guess to that end, if you had it a different week, that probably would create more work for the staff. So I guess my consensus would be, we've kind of made it work. And I think if the board thinks it's still reasonable to meet at those times, I would just keep the times the way they were, three and three. And the Thursday is as needed. Be my opinion.
Madam Clerk? Amy?
I agree with what they've said. I mean, it's no more work either way. And two meetings in one week, I mean, we prepare, I know as far as the agenda books, I prepare it all at one time for both meetings. So it's no more work for me. So whatever the board thinks is fine with me.
I would concur as far as meeting time. I think depends on how we use that time. If we want to do a planned work session, but if the board has information on Tuesday, it's a tight turnaround for staff to get it and bring it back by Thursday. So I just think it really is the board's intent on what those days are used for. I mean, and the budget season is coming up, so we're going to have probably Tuesday and Thursday meetings anyway. So for the first quarter of the year, I don't think it's going to matter. But I do think, as long as we've got the planned time for the work on that, but you know, I think that's where sometimes it gets a little tricky. We've had a couple of those meetings where, well, can you research this and let's vote on this Thursday because we weren't ready Tuesday? That creates a little bit of difficulty for staff, depending on the topic. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I think that's probably the only comment I could offer. That would be different from what's already been offered.
Thank you. Randy?
I think I would concur with Brian. And outside of the budget season, I kind of like having the meetings on separate, so we do have the turnaround time to get you guys what you need if there were questions at the Tuesday meeting.
Thank you. Turn to you, Mr. Jim.
You know, you don't require me most Thursdays to be here, so I don't really have a comment one way or the other on that.
Okay.
But I would say, as a point of personal observation, I think that the board's decision-making has been enhanced by shortening the meetings.
Yeah.
I think, with all due respect, because I'm sure I'm with you, we all look pretty darn tired-
Yeah.
-you know, at that kind of time. And I think it, you know, given the items that you're considering in public hearings and that sort of thing, that it can only enhance your decision-making by being fresher at due notice.
Tim?
The only thing I have, there's a couple of times during the year where Nick and I will have conflict with West Piedmont Planning District meetings. They also meet on Thursday. And I think it's what, two or three times a year that it conflicts? So at those times, we may have to be excused. And I think it is important that we, at least one of us make it down there.
How about any other supervisors? If you've got any comments?
I would just say, I would prefer the 1:30 time, but the 3:00 is easily doable for me. And I think it'd be nice to have the Thursday meeting as an optional rather than having it automatic, because in certain cases, it felt like we had a very light Thursday meeting that could have been combined with Tuesday and gotten it all done, rather than we're all driving a long, you know, a fairly long distance to get here in the prep time and all. And so it would be nice if it wasn't fixed, but it was more optional. But we all kept it on the schedule.
I'll have to say for myself, I think I like the 1:30 time with the Thursday meeting, but we need to have that open so that if we have to have a workshop. But I would like to be able to put an ending time on it, but I know we can't do that with our public hearings, because I'm here to tell you, you know, this year, a couple of times this past year, it's been midnight when we got out of here, and I know everybody was tired when they left. I know they were. And myself, I'll have to speak for myself, but I expect I'm going to see a lot of heads shake. It's hard for, slightly Jim said a while ago about making good decisions at that time of night, you've been there that day and you're tired and you're wore out. I knew I was going to see a lot of heads shaking, yes. But I don't see how we could put a cap on the end of it because of the public hearings and everything, because we got, really got no control over that.
It's public comment, too, right?
Yeah, public comment. We really got no control over all of that, on how that is. So I'll tell you what, let's do it this way. I think this will be the fairest way to do it. Madam Clerk, if you do a roll call, and we'll go down through there, and everybody just say, if you want to do it at 1:30 and then say the Thursday open for, you know, work session, or if you want to come and do, have a Tuesday and a Thursday meeting at 3:00. Everybody just, Madam Clerk, just do a roll call and we'll go, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, may I add one more thing, Mr. Chairman? As the board considers this, too, I know we have on the agenda the setting of the broadband authority meetings. And of course, this last year, we set the 2:00 timeframe on that Thursday. And of course, the broadband doesn't necessarily meet monthly, more like every other month, typically with the business. So I don't know if that complicates matters, but just wanted to throw that out there because the 1:30, starting at the 1:30 on the Tuesday, if we wanted to coincide with broadband, that would be the, you know, the 12:30, you know, and so forth, if we wanted to do it that way, or broadband on another evening. So I just wanted to mention that.
If, Mr. Chairman, if we have, we're talking about maybe cutting out the Thursday meeting, we probably might not be able to decide that until the Tuesday meeting, right? I mean, if we've got no business, we'll say, but does that give us time enough to advertise that we're closing it down? Chris?
Well, we'll, staff will answer that, but I think I can answer that, too. It'll be advertised. It just, we'll say it at the meeting on whether or not we will have the Thursday meeting. But it will automatically be advertised, so it'll be, yes, covered. Yes, sir, that's a good question, catch, Marshall, on that. It'll be advertised for that.
As far as it goes, I think, for me, leave things like they are. And like I said, on, if we decide we don't need a Thursday meeting, we'll knock it out then. You know, that's where I look. No, I'm saying leaving it at 3:00 like it is now. That's what I'm saying.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call on this and let everybody say what they want to do?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Mitchell?
I'm, I'm fine with leaving it at the time it is. But, but again, flexible to change it as is suitable for the needs of the board.
So 3:00 PM?
Sure.
Supervisor Carter?
Leave it at 3:00 PM and flexible Thursday.
Supervisor Smith?
I support 3:00 on Tuesday and Thursday.
Supervisor Quinn?
1:30 with a flexible Thursday.
Supervisor Tatum?
I support 3:00 and with being flexible on Thursday as well.
Supervisor Jamison?
3:00, flexible on Thursday.
Okay, and Chairman Thompson?
Doesn't matter to me at all, but since everybody else has done 3:00, I'm going to go with that as well.
So it's 3:00.
Mr. Chairman, this may be a parliamentary question. I know that was kind of a poll census. So, Mr. Gwynn, can that suffice then, as the actual setting won't necessarily need? That was the vote?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With the, when we have to do the board, when the, we have to do the broadband, just pick either the Tuesday or the Thursday, whichever's most convenient for staff and the chair of the broadband, and have it on that day, on that day. It'd just be in our package, which one we got to, you know, it's going to be at. We know it's either going to be on Tuesday or Thursday in that same week, come in at 2:00. That suit everybody? Board rules and procedures?
Yep, with holidays.
We need to do the holidays first. I don't know how we skipped, how I skipped that. Holidays is number two, page two. They're all the same as they have been. Any changes on those?
Not that I'm aware, Mr. Chairman. These are, follow the state Commonwealth of Virginia's holiday schedule, as in years
Just a question of curiosity, is it required that the county adopts state holidays?
No, sir. No, sir.
So that's something we're granting?
Some, some localities do their own set of holidays. Typically, most localities follow the state schedule holidays, just because of reasons for consistency. If the DMV's closed, if the state office is closed, the courts are closed, as an example. We don't have control of the court. So in the past, that's why we follow the state holiday calendar, if that gives you some background. But you don't have to follow the state-
Yes.
...set of holidays.
Just curious.
I was just letting Mr. Quinn know that lots of these times, though, the county attorney's not closed.
He never, he never sleeps.
Yeah, there's self-awareness.
All right, any more questions? Anything else? All right. Do I have a motion that we adopt these holidays as proposed?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, all right. Page three, board rules and procedures. They're pretty much, well, they, they're pretty much to it, they're the same as it's been for a long time. We changed, changed a couple last year, but nothing has changed this year. And what is the board's pleasure? All right, hearing none? Everybody okay? Are you still reading? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the meeting procedures as presented.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? All right, no opposition. The next one we've already taken care of, but we need to vote on it, that's the broadband.
Mr. Chairman, if I-
Yes, sir.
Couldn't, I can't see you, you're behind the plant, but, after you made that comment, I was just wondering if it might be better to move the broadband to Tuesday as needed? That way, if you don't meet on Thursday, we don't have to meet just for the broadband? Is that?
That's probably a good idea.
So it'd be 2:00 on Tuesday if needed?
If needed, it'd be at 2:00 on Tuesday. And if we don't meet on Thursday, it doesn't matter.
I was going to suggest that, Steve. Yeah, therefore, if we don't, that doesn't need to be the only reason we come in on Thursday.
All right, so we'll meet at 2:00, at 12, 2:00 on Thursday, Tuesday. I'll say it in a minute. We'll meet at 2:00 on Tuesday as needed. And it will be announced in our package. I need a motion on this.
Should I move?
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Number five, notice of a meeting. Franklin County Board of Supervisors, together with Franklin County School Board. All county residents are hereby encouraged to attend public meetings of the Franklin County Board of Supervisors to facilitate this public participation. This notice is to advise that the members of the Franklin County Board of Supervisors will host a meeting with the Franklin County School Board. This meeting will occur at the Franklin Center, located at 50 Claiborne Avenue in Rocky Mount, Virginia, in the multipurpose room on Thursday, January 16th, at 2025 at 6:00 PM. Any person with a disability who needs accommodation to participate in this meeting should contact Amy Renick Clerk at 540-483-3032 at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. All in, I guess we need a motion on this, Amy? I need a motion on this.
I will, Mr. Chairman. Just up the date and time for a joint meeting with the school board.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By the same sign? All right, Mr. Whitlow, I know we was talking earlier, potential of a closed meeting, and if that was going to take a long time, we may have to forego Mr. Gwynn, the county attorney, on the FOIA. What's, what's the deal with that?
Mr. Thompson, we are at a point where we will not need the closed meeting today. We may need one, possibly on the 16th, maybe the 21st, certainly our normal meeting. But things have worked where we will not have to do that. So Mr. Gwynn can spend that time with the board today, going over FOIA and COIA matters. I do have a few updates, Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Gwynn, if I may.
Okay.
I shared, just right before the Christmas holidays, I guess a Christmas present of sorts for the county. As the board knows, all of the bond rating agencies rate and have rated the county in the last few years for us. Last May, Fitch upgraded our bond rating to one notch below AAA. And Standards &amp; Poor, our bond rating, one notch below AAA. Of course, a few weeks ago, Mr. Carter and I did a conference call. Moody's had been in contact with Davenport requesting that we provide some information to them, really giving us an update. Moody's gave us a positive outlook this last year. And so they really wanted to circle back with us as to that outlook and where things may be with our rating. And I'm pleased to announce that since that time, Moody's has increased our bond rating to AA1. And that was from the AA2, which is now all three rating agencies have Franklin County rated just one notch below AAA. That's the highest bond rating of any locality that I'm aware of in western Virginia. Compliments to the Board of Supervisors, both now and past, and for your good fiscal management of county resources. In the words of Davenport, this is a rarity for two bond rating agencies to upgrade the county in one year. They do not see that very often. And so congratulations to the board. I really appreciate Mr. Carter and his staff and the entire board for the sound fiscal management that this board, and as I said, previous boards have provided the county. I think what this will do, it will position us very well as we look to larger generational projects when we do have to borrow those funds for very competitive interest rates. It also, from an economic development standpoint, it really speaks volumes to prospective business and industry that look to bank on the county as a place to conduct and do business. So congratulations really to the residents and the citizens of the county and our businesses all the way around for, for that upgrade. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, there are, and we'll be getting that information out. Mr. Tosh has worked on a press release for that to get to the media. Just some updates in terms of, for, just a few here. Coming up on next Tuesday, January 7th, our building official, John Broughton, will host code update training at the Franklin Center. That's from 8:00 to 3:00 for contractors. We've got the word out. We've sent information to our contractors, so please spread the word. We are mandated under, under the new code updates that will go into effect this year. And so Mr. Broughton and his staff will be providing that training again. That's next Tuesday, January 7th, at the Franklin Center. In addition, on Wednesday, January 8th, next week, at 6:00, the school system has invited the board to the Fall Academic Awards Program at the High School Auditorium, that's 6:00 next Wednesday. And then I saw the sheriff here earlier, there he is. The sheriff has also invited the board to attend the annual banquet and awards on January the 11th- to attend the annual banquet, um, and awards, uh, on January the eleventh at Franklin Heights Church. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, just remind the board, um, Amy Rennick, our clerk, has distributed to the board, uh, the, um, Conflicts of Interest Statements, if you will, the financial disclosure statements that, uh, we as appointed and elected bodies have to complete, uh, each year. So if you have any questions on that, please see Amy in her office. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's just a few updates that I have, and, uh, again, wish the board, um, a, uh, good new year and look forward to working with you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Smith, congratulations as a vice chair. Look forward to working with you, and, uh, we continue to work ahead. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think Mr. Gwynne has some training for us today.
Just one thing before Jim, before you go. We got this email. I get, I think everybody did. It's from Lori Cow- Crou-.
Crouch.
Crouch.
Yes, sir.
Said right in a minute, and it was from a citizen in regards to the delay over on Brick Church Road. Can we make sure that there's proper signage up over there and that there is possibilities of delay? And they may, may need to alter their routes. Can we make sure that that's there? If, if it's not already there, that the contractor's got something up to take care of that.
Yes, sir. I think that situation has already been resolved.
It's already been resolved.
Yeah, there was a period of transition there when, um, there was a actuated light that was put up for, for the, the detours. They were working on it intersection, but that, that problem, I think, has, uh, been resolved at this point.
Great, thank you. Jim, you can, you can do it right here if you want to, or you can go down there, whichever suits you best.
Whatever's easiest for you. I mean, it's.
Well, we got everything you got right here on our screens in front of us.
I think the only thing will be that I'll have to give a sign to Amy when to flip a page or something, or.
Why don't you just go down there? Why don't you just go down there?
That's what I thought. Yeah, let me do that. Nah, that's all right. I've got, I've actually got a surprise that I need to elbow for. I've got to put a little humor in this deal.
Okay.
Except it's, funny as it may seem to y'all, I'm in the middle of it.
This is the FOIA. He generally upstairs, updates us on FOIA every year, and it's very good training.
And you know, it seems like 2024 was a year in which there were a lot of things that happened under FOIA that were, uh, maybe never happened before. Um, you know, had all those problems in Augusta County with, um, recording of closed meetings, and then whether or not they could disclose the recording of it, and, you know. The one thing for sure that came out of that was that they spent a lot on attorney's. I mean, bottom line, I don't know that any of it was necessarily instructive for us, other than, uh, if you are recording our closed meetings, see me afterward, so we can talk about that, uh, as in, and hopefully the sheriff will be here, and he's armed, and we'll get that fixed, uh, because that creates way more problems than you could ever imagine. Uh, as the chairman said, this is the statutorily required FOIA and FOIA training. Um, my understanding is, I guess, that dinner's at 5:30, so it's about thirty-five minutes, maybe, Chris, at work.
We got plenty, yeah.
Let's start with, uh, the, the concept, uh, behind FOIA. All right, it's, yeah. It, it's important, certainly in a democracy, in any republican form of government, that the citizens have access to public records. It, it's not a matter of citizens only receiving information that you want them to have. It's very important that they have access to information that they believe is necessary, or that they're interested in, to know about, uh, their government. And this goes, frankly, there's a Freedom of Information Act that applies to the federal government. There's one of, you know, ours applies to the state, uh, and applies to all the towns, cities, counties, and the state. The second thing that is very important is that folks have the opportunity and ability to attend the meetings. Because no matter how great, and they are great, Amy's minutes are, you still sometimes need to be there in order to know what went on and understand the dynamics of how that went on. So it's very important, uh, where you're conducting the business of the people, that you make sure that the people are welcome to come and watch you do that. Uh, and, you know, I, I like to think, even in the absence of FOIA, that we would still be doing that because it, it, it's the right thing to do. So the idea that FOIA exists is, is simply to me, a reminder of what our obligations are, what your obligations are, uh, in the positions that you, you've been elected to. It's been an interesting couple of years, uh, for FOIA in the courts. Uh, this next part about the provisions of the chapter being liberally construed, um, I haven't seen a case that's come out of either the Court of Appeals or the Virginia Supreme Court on FOIA that the citizen hasn't won in a long time. These things are being, uh, liberally construed to the point to where, frankly, the government always loses. I mean, it's, it's crazy. Should it be that way? Yeah, I, I, you know, I get it, although some of the decisions have been a little bit, um, stretching, maybe, of, of where we ought to be. And when it comes down to seeming to interfere with getting the work done, that's where I sort of have a problem with what the courts are telling us. But again, uh, the legislature decided that it's going to be liberally construed. They're going to promote an increased awareness, uh, by all persons with governmental activities, and they want to give every citizen, as we were saying a minute ago, the opportunity to witness what's going on. So. So you, in any FOIA analysis, you start from whatever they want they can have, and you work backward through the exemptions that are in the code, code section, uh, and the descriptions of the documents and the definitions and that sort of thing. So it, it's not a matter of looking at it as to what you want to give them. It's a matter of, they get everything except what's exempt. From a, from a non-document standpoint, we'll talk about documents in a few minutes, but from your meeting standpoint, there actually were some changes this year. Uh, back in 2023, uh, the Virginia Supreme Court decided a case out of Prince William County that was really fascinating for a lot of different reasons. Um, and basically, it arose in 2020. Soon after the George Floyd mess in, in Minnesota, there were protests in Prince William County that basically turned into riots. Then there was concern about the police response to the riots. The day after, which I think was May twentieth or May twenty-first of 2020, the Citizens Advisory Board of the Police Department, Prince William, like Arlington, Fairfax, and Reiko has a police department, not sheriff's office. But, uh, the Citizens Advisory Board decided that they would have a meeting to review how the police had responded to the riot. Of the eight members, this is kind of odd, too, eight members of the Prince William Board of Supervisors, five of them showed up to the meeting and proceeded to discuss with the citizens, uh, all their gripes with regard to the police department and the like. Obviously, the Board of Supervisors in a police situation have supervisory authority over, uh, in general philosophically, over the police department. And, uh, they had a meeting, they attended that meeting at one o'clock. There was no announcement, no notice of the meeting. They then decided, the, the five of them that were there decided that, um, there ought to be another meeting of the Board of Supervisors held at four o'clock in the afternoon. This gets really compressed. Uh, and they gave notice to all eight of them. They all eight showed up. Well, the three that hadn't been at the previous meeting were hot because they hadn't been given notice of the meeting. So in the course of this four o'clock meeting, there was a bunch of argument over whether or not the proper notice would be given, whether it had been a meeting, whether there was a violation of FOIA. The five said, "No, there's no violation of FOIA because we weren't really having a meeting. We weren't doing public business. We were just listening." You know, we're, that's not a problem. The other three said, "Yeah, that doesn't sound right to us." As you can imagine, with public, with the public there, and the three of them raising the issue and the five arguing against it, somebody in the, in, sitting there said, "Maybe I'll just file a suit under FOIA and find out what the court thinks," and did. They went to trial at the close of the plaintiff's evidence. The county made a motion to strike the evidence and get the case dismissed, and the circuit court said, "Yeah, we'll do that." This is a pattern, by the way. When, when I told you earlier that we don't win at the Supreme Court, we do really well at the circuit court. Uh, it could be because there are folks that live in the county or whatever, but on appeal, uh, Supreme Court said, "Nope, nope, doesn't work that way." So what I've given you here is the appea- is basically language that was put into the statute as a result of the Supreme Court decision. The gist of it hasn't changed. Uh, if there's more than two people, or if more than a quorum, then it's going to be a meeting. However, uh, to clarify, what they've said is, "For the purpose of this definition," this is down at the bottom, the last sentence or two are, are the new part, "For purposes of this definition of meeting only, the term 'public business' means any activity a public body has undertaken or proposes to undertake on behalf of the people it represents." Pretty broad. And the argument, the, the, the opinion that ruled against the county basically said, "Because those supervisors were there listening to citizens and that they were expected to take some action with regard to the police response to the riots, that it therefore met the definition, even though it wasn't something that was on an agenda, and even though it wasn't something that they had really set out thinking that they were going to, uh, address at any particular time." So, uh, there were the exceptions, and this is how, uh, if you, again, this is how FOIA works. Everything, all meetings are covered, except, uh, "You can meet at any ti- any place or function where no part of the purpose of such gathering or attendance is the discussion or transaction of any public business, and such gathering or attendance was not called or prearranged with any purpose of discussing or transacting any business of the public body." The addition, "And no discussion or transaction of public business takes place." So even though you may show up saying, "We're not planning on ta- doing any public business," if you start doing public business, you're violating FOIA. I think we all figured that, knew that, but now, there's no argument later that, you know, what, what was it saying that Dangerfield used? He went to a wrestling match and a hockey game broke out? But, but there's no, you know, there's no, "Oh, yeah, we weren't going to talk about public business," but then a discussion of public business broke out, so it really wasn't a meeting. Doesn't work that way anymore. Statute's very clear on it. The other exception is what I call the public forum, candidate forum, that type of thing, where you, where they're gathering information from the public not to transact public business or to hold discussions relating to the transaction of public business. Again, "Where no discussion or transaction of public business takes place among the members of the public body." And this is clarifying for the, uh, the candidate forum. "Even though the performance of the members individually or collectively in the conduct of public business may be a topic of discussion, debate, or question by others at such be, at such meeting." So what they're saying is, if, you know, if four of you are running in one particular year, and you all show up at a candidate's forum, and the discussion is how you performed, you know, that's the point of, uh, uh, you know, should you be reelected? That's fine. That's not a FOIA violation. That's not considered public business. There was some question about that before, and I know, uh, at least from my standpoint, I've always been very conservative in my advice in that regard to, you know, if you're in that, in that situation, do not talk about public business. You know, do your best not to talk about it. Frankly, if you can avoid being in, in that situation, uh, and I know you can't, it's a candidate forum or whatever, but other types of things, you know, if it's a lake forum, if it's a forum in, you know, uh, Westlake, or if it's a forum in Glade Hill, or if it's a forum in Faram, make sure that if there's more than two of you there, that you're not engaging in that discussion of public business. And that's why I've always thought, if only two of you go, we're really better off from that standpoint, uh, because then we don't have to ever, it can't be a meeting, you know, because it's only two people.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question? Mr. Gwynne, just to clarify, we are, and we all acknowledge the fact, we get invited to a lot of stuff uniformly, um, and individually. Um, so what is your opinion on when we respond individually that will attend an event? Should that go through our clerk, um, to make sure that there, that there's no more than two? Or does it matter as long as we don't talk or transact county business?
I don't think it matters as long as you don't talk or transact county public business. You just have to be very careful about that. And given the sort of amorphous definition we have of it now of, I guess, if you go back, you'll look at, um, "Means any activity a public body has undertaken or proposes to undertake?" Well, I, I mean, I wouldn't want to hurt your feelings, but my guess is that most of the time you're invited to these things because they want you to take some action, as opposed to you're all just great dinner guests. I mean, not that you aren't.
They're hurting our feelings.
They kind of want something from you. And it usually has to do with an activity a public body has undertaken or proposes to undertake. So you have to be very, very careful when you're there, uh, about, uh, how that comes across to them because you don't want to walk into that, uh, without, uh, you know, without thinking, frankly.
Thank you.
So, all right, notice of meetings, you've already passed that tonight. Um, and it, it's interesting. Those are your set meetings, right? So you don't have to, you know, uh, they're on the website. Everything's fine. We have the set meetings. Uh, the other, you know, that's what number one is. You're posting them on the official government site. You're placing them in the prominent location. Placing at the office of the clerk is interesting to me. Um, I, I don't know if we want to put them on Amy's door, or how are we going to do that? But you got a board there outside? Good. And then, uh, the notice is posted at least three days before the meeting, which I think she just does on your calendar. You take care of that. The agenda packet, uh, has to be available. Um, you know, times change. When I first started, uh, as a town attorney in Christiansburg, there was no agenda packet. And basically, there was a guy named, who was legendary, named John Limley, who was the town manager, and he just came in and told the council what they needed to do, pretty much that way. Okay, y'all need to pass this, this, and this, and they vote for it, and that'd be that. Shortest meetings in history. Everything was fine. Until they started electing people who said, "Whoa, wait a minute." You know, by that time, Limley was gone, and his successor was sort of doing the same thing. And they were going, "We don't even know what's going on. What are you talking about?" And, yeah, I just assumed it was because I was the lowly town attorney, but I'd never seen the agenda packet. And to find out, they'd never had one, because they were just doing what Limley told them to do. A- as a result, I mentioned to them, "Hey, uh, there's this thing called an agenda packet that all the other localities do, and it happened that they had a woman working for them who had previously done the agenda packet in another location that I represented." I said, "And by the way, you got an employee who could do it." They were going, "Well, hey, that'd be great." You know, it was, I mean, that's been within twenty-five years. So it's, so the agenda's there. It's, it's, uh, available to the public. And, and it's everything that you get. Uh, you know, the public is entitled to everything that's in your agenda packet, which is why if there are documents that we think are going to be required for the closed meeting, that's why they're not in your agenda packet. You know, they're passed out at the closed meeting, you know, for that reason. Called meetings, um, I know we always go under the thirty days, I mean, the three days idea, but that's not necessarily the case. If it's a special or emergency meeting, I go back to the Prince William case. How in the world did they have a meeting three hours after the previous one? Well, they gave notice to the press at the same time they gave notice to the members of the board, and that, and that meets the requirements of the statute. So, you know, God forbid, there's some issue that requires that kind of situation where it's happened so fast that we had to get everybody together within a day. We can do that. Uh, but we just have to remember to put it on the, uh, website, send it out to everybody who is on the list that we send agendas to, and make sure that all gets done at the same time they come to you. So, you know, it is flexible enough for us to do that. We have adopted the remote participation policy. Uh, we have that. If you're sick, you're out of town or whatever, and you want to be involved in the meeting, uh, you can do it. Uh, keep in mind, um, if it's the personal matter exemption that you're using, uh, it's no more than two or twenty-five percent of the meetings, uh, whichever is, uh, fewer, I guess. You know, some localities, they have twice a month, then. Some localities, they have twice a month, then 24, yeah. So you get up to six. But for 12, you're going to be right around, right around that number. Start from the premise that all meetings are open, and that we only get closed meetings for limited, certain limited purposes. Now, it seems that there's, there's not a uniform way that this gets done. I've got some clients, and on the agenda every month, there is the last item which says, they say executive session, you know, real estate and contracts. It's like, guys, that doesn't work. Oh, nobody worries about that. You know, small county, nobody's going to give us any grief about it. And so far, they haven't. But unfortunately, because there's nothing else in there, I have no idea what they're meeting about. So they'll look at me about 20 minutes before the end of the meeting and go, can we have a closed meeting over this? What? Yeah. You hadn't thought of that? So, you know, I'm scratching my head and trying to figure out what the exemption is and seeing if we can't get us into closed meeting or if we can go into it. And honest to goodness, sometimes I feel like their feelings are hurt when I tell them that. It's like, well, it's a contract. Well, it's not every contract. You know, there are certain requirements that get you into the closed meeting. So, all right. So the first one, and I only put in the ones that are most used, obviously the ones that apply to places like VCU and things like that, you know, we don't need. But 3711 A1 is the personnel exemption. It looks like it's a lot, but the Attorney General has said that really the only discussion, consideration, assignment, appointment, that sort of thing, that the board can have a discussion of in a closed meeting is board-appointed employees, which consist of Chris and me. You don't, you don't hire the department heads, you don't hire the parks and rec workers, you don't get to discuss them in closed meeting. That has been a, a bugaboo in certain locations, not in this one, that, you know, again, when they don't tell me what it is, oh, it's personnel, let me sit down. Let me just say that knowing what the Attorney General has said and knowing that you're one of the two appointed people and, and all you see on the agenda is discussion of personnel?
Field of small.
Yeah. You might, as you might imagine, Chris and I are on the phone trying to figure out who it, who it is.
Yeah, it's not a safe place to be.
No, it's not a, yeah, that's, that's a tough one. But in any event, just keeping that in mind, that goes back to frankly, what we've worked on now for quite a while and, and do a much better job at, I think, than a lot of localities, and that is for the board to understand that, you know, you don't supervise the parks and rec workers, and you don't supervise those folks. And so it, it's a great closed meeting tool for your appointees, but beyond that, you're really not able to get into a whole lot. All right. Acquisition of real property for a public purpose or disposition of real property, that's sort of a thumbnail sketch of it. As you can imagine, the rest of it says something along the lines of where discussion in open session would make it hard for you to negotiate. So for example, if you wanted to have a public vote over what, you know, what you would take for a piece of property, then guess what you're going to get offered? Exactly what you would take, right? Likewise, if we're going to have a public vote over what we'll offer, then you're really kind of hamstringing our negotiating ability because they know it'll be in the minutes. So that's why you have to have that sort of closed meeting. The discussion of prospective business or expansion of business, you know, I feel like I should just let Danny talk for 20 minutes on this, but we don't have 20 minutes, so we'll, we'll do it this way. For whatever reason, and she may explain it, because I can't, businesses don't want people to know they're thinking about a particular location. For the life of me, and I've heard all of it, well, you know, they don't want other people driving the price of the property up, and they don't want this, they don't want that. And then the governor doesn't want people to know that the business is coming until the governor gets to say so. But it's really a, I mean, it's a, it's there for a purpose. Obviously, it's necessary because nobody's argued about it, and, and if the prospect comes to us and says they don't want it to be public, then thankfully, we can go into a closed meeting and talk about it.
But this is in addition to an NDA, right? So if there's an-
Oh, yeah, yeah. The layers of things. The layers that they put on that to make sure nobody knows is, it just, my, from my perspective, is just head-scratcher. From Danny's perspective, it's every day. So, you know, she's just kind of used to it. It doesn't faze her. Investment of public funds where competition or bargaining's involved, similar to a purchase, but if we were going to plan on, you know, a purchase of property as an investment, that would be similar to that, or if we were going to invest in a particular piece maybe of public safety equipment, that would be an investment where bargaining would be, well, it used to be involved, it seems like more than it is now. Seems like now we just sort of get, they tell us what the price is and that we can have it in three years, you know, so. But there was a time when that actually meant something from a public safety standpoint, but now it's just, you know, it kind of stuck in a lot of respect. Consultation with legal counsel, rate actual or probable litigation. Eight, consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters. So those are really two different things. The litigation one, number seven, is you've been sued or you fully expect to be sued. The specific legal matters, I mean, as you know, they run the gamut. You know, everything from whether the performance agreement's acceptable to how we would structure this contract, to how we could structure this or whatever. So there's a, they're act, we have to be careful when we go into the closed meeting with regard to legal counsel, that we distinguish between the two accurately and appropriately. You know, I've been in meetings where they've said, okay, we're going in under seven, and I've been sitting there racking my brain going, did we get sued? I mean, you know, who's going to sue us? And then you find out, no, they meant eight. You're just going, man, this has been a long meeting thinking about this, so. Discussion of award of public contract and the terms of the contract. This is one of the closed meeting deals that they're actually a number of cases about. And they've been very specific that once the contract has been awarded, you don't get to go into closed meeting anymore. And we have to be very careful about that because, you know, if we've, if we've already entered into the agreement, do we necessarily get to go back and talk about it again? We have to be very careful how we structure that. The terms of contract, again, once we've entered, you know, we've entered into the contract, we don't get to talk about the terms anymore. Then the last one I put in was the discussion of proprietary records and trade secrets regarding I think it was six or seven years ago now that they kind of revamped some of the proprietary records and trade secrets requirements. And they're a little harder to meet now than they used to be. I mean, in the old days, every bid you'd receive, they would say, oh, yeah, and our pricing is proprietary, and you can't tell anybody. Well, that's crazy. I mean, you know, how are you going to vote on the contract if you can't tell the public what the amount is? And I think the General Assembly finally said, yeah, here's what constitutes proprietary, and here's what constitutes a trade secret. And it's a very limited universe of things that you can go into. All right. As you know, we can sit back in closed meeting and agree all we want to, but until we take a vote in public, no good, doesn't do anything. So, got to do that. When we do it, we have to have the subject matter, we talk about the code section to go into the public meeting, into the closed meeting. There's a case that was probably now 10 or 15 years ago in the Virginia Supreme Court called White Dog Publishing, and they used to basically say, you know, as I was jokingly saying previously, yeah, we'll just go in and talk about contracts. They lost. Of course, you knew that because we always lose, but anyway, the, the point is, we have to have that specificity. If we're talking about buying a piece of property, we got to at least say, you know, we're buying a piece of property in the Glade Hill Magisterial District, or we're buying a piece of property in the Westlake Magisterial District. We can't just say we're thinking about buying property. We also have to make sure that we put the code section from FOIA in there. If we're talking to the attorney about litigation, we got to put in 3711 A7. You got to make sure it notes that. The litigation one can be a little tricky. Some people think litigation's enough because of the attorney-client privilege part of it. Others will say, you know, involving litigation out of an accident, you know, and, and that suffices. But either way, the attorney-client privilege exists with FOIA in kind of a balancing situation. Okay, public records. What you really need to know about public records is, first off, assume everything that comes across your desk or emailed to you or whatever that has to do with being a member of the Board of Supervisors is a public record. Second, don't destroy the public record. Preserve it. If you get emails, save the emails. If you get texts, save the texts. Make sure, I mean, I know this sounds crazy, but we know that Amy maintains all the agendas that are on the website. You can throw that away. But, you know, otherwise, documents that come across your desk as a board member, you want to be very careful about in maintaining. Texts are difficult. I've been in lawsuits where, you know, we've gotten requests from the other side for text messages, and if you, if you pull your phone out right now, you'll look at it and see your text messages, and, you know, for example, your texts to your spouse, they end. You know, it's maybe they're a year or maybe 18 months, but they don't go all the way back to the beginning. It's not, it's not saved there. I'm not sure, I think the different carriers have different policies on how long they maintain the texts on their servers, but you don't want to be the one to get rid of them. You want to make sure that if you can't get them, it's because you can't get them off the server. The Public Records Act, you have to, you have to maintain all these things. So, all right. So I've got a surprise for Amy. Can you make the Elmo come on and let that be the page? So I, I'm aware of, how's that for being nondescript, of a locality where the Board of Supervisors is somewhat in turmoil. And by that, I mean, one member of the board and his wife are sponsoring petitions to remove the others from the board. He's filed a defamation suit against the other members. It's a real nightmare situation. But to sort of reinforce what can happen if you don't understand this stuff and if you don't follow it, I'll show you a letter that was written, but I'll tell you, the only reason I'm showing you this is like a what not to do. Do not think what's in this letter is accurate. Not going to work. There's a light on. I don't know. So where will it come? All right. All right. So this guy decides, they get into a dispute, and one of the board members asked for a letter that the other board member wrote as a board member. And he comes back and says, I don't have to give that to you, because FOIA ensures ready access to public records in the custody of the public body, and the letter you demand to see is not in the custody of Highland County. Well, if you're a member of the board, it is, okay? If you write the letter, it's considered that way. FOIA request for my emails cannot magically make the letter appear since it was written on my computer and sent via US mail. Wrong again. Regardless of where you write it, regardless of where the email comes in, whether it's your personal computer or whether it's an, you know, an address that's given to you by the county. I do not save any county correspondence, hard copy or computer file. That's pretty much an admission of a violation of FOIA. And even if there was a file, which there is not, it would be on my personal computer, which is not in the custody of a public body. It doesn't matter, okay? It doesn't matter. The last part, though, don't forget I can reciprocate with my own FOIA request. Is that what you want? Our county administrator doing all of that versus handling county business? If that's what you want, continue down this path. If not, withdraw your request. It's an interesting place. It makes you thankful when you're working with other elected bodies, but, you know, the concern is, everything in there, he's pretty much wrong on. And I don't know, you know, I haven't asked the county attorney, you know, I don't know how it got to that point, but for goodness sakes, you know. The best thing and the best advice I can give you, and I give it to everybody, and I give it to y'all every year, is use your county email address, okay? When the FOIA request comes in for your emails, then the guys in IT get it right out. And if you're not using your county email address, start using it, because it's, it's absolutely essential from a FOIA standpoint for a number of reasons. One, it's always on the county server. You can't accidentally delete it. Two, you can't intentionally delete it, in case you were thinking in those terms. Three, you get five days, five working days when you get a FOIA request. If we've got, we can get an extra seven, but if we've got to go through your computer, we got to go through the IT search and everything else, we can't get it done in 12 days. Now, if it's just the IT guys, we can, but by the time we get through, you know, your computer, laptop, home, whatever, probably can't. And oh, by the way, while we're looking at it, you don't have it. So if you use your laptop a lot and you get a FOIA request, you got to turn it over so we can look at it, what are you going to do? So by all means, use the county email address. If you don't take anything else away from this, that's the most important thing I can tell you. I actually sent an email this morning, a request from a county administrator. What can you tell our board members about using their personal computers or their personal email addresses as opposed to the county's? And my response was, it is a terrible, terrible mistake to make, because it, it is only bad for you. And, and it just, you know, I, another example, if we get sued over something, and somehow it comes up that maybe members of the Board of Supervisors had had emails about it, and they find out, the other side finds out that not only were you using your county email address, but you were using your personal email address, they're going to subpoena your computer and take it to a forensics expert, and they're going to dig through the hard drive looking for those types of emails. I'm really not exaggerating because I've seen it done, and, and judges will allow it in the cause. That's what you told them. Well, yeah, I often use my, you know, home email address. So please, please, don't make that mistake. Trust me, it's a mistake. All right. The great thing about FOIA training is I don't really have to do it. All I have to do is tell you where to get it. And so, as you'll note here, you do have to file your disclosure statement, Amy, you passed those out already, everything's good there. Got any questions about that, let us know, be glad to help you. This won't be the first time for any of you, so should be fairly routine, I hope. The Conflict of Interest Act, the FOIA Council provides training, and they can do it online, and I think most of you've done it online. In fact, Amy keeps up with it because you can check and see. So sometime, was it till the end of January, maybe? Yeah, yeah. Sometime before now and the end of the month, go online, you'll see, I've got it in here. Yeah. You'll see under the statute, she's got the, these- You'll see on the statute, she's got the, these, what are they, URLs or whatever, that you click on and go into the website, and you can do it right there. It records that you did it. Don't fast forward because they'll catch you. They don't follow that. Make sure you answer all of it, and that'll take you through the module, and you'll have it taken care of. The interesting thing about FOIA, from my standpoint, has been how it gets enforced. Generally, it's treated similar to a criminal situation where the Commonwealth attorney enforces the act, which is why if you have a FOIA question, and you call me, what I'm probably going to tell you is, I think you're right, but the gold standard is getting the Commonwealth attorney to think you're right, that it's not a violation. And once you've got that letter from the Commonwealth attorney, that, that what you, the fact pattern that you give them is not a FOIA violation, you're golden. You know, the Commonwealth attorney won't prosecute you, it's a defense. Now, if I send you the letter, it's evidence that you thought about it, and it's evidence that you acted based on what I told you, but it's not the immunity that the Commonwealth attorney gives in this situation. So you definitely want to go with the Commonwealth attorney. Anything that you involve, that, that you start to think, is there, you know, is there a financial advantage, or do I get something benefit out of this? You ought to start thinking of it in terms of whether or not it could be a conflict of interest, and therefore, you need an opinion on it. And it's not always clear. It's, I would much rather have you call me and ask than find out later that, you know, the Commonwealth attorney has decided that they were going to investigate it. I mean, you want to get ahead of these things and make sure, because you can, if you get ahead of it, then you can get to the Commonwealth attorney, and if they say, yes, it's a problem, you don't do it. If you don't do that, and you just go down the road without thinking about it, it's going to be too late. Last thing I'll say about Conflict of Interest Act, and I, you know, I very rarely get asked about one that really is a conflict of interest, but invariably, the discussion goes off into, is this something you really think is that important, that because it smells bad, and even though it's not a technical legal problem, do you want the public to know, and, you know, do you really want to spend your time justifying what's being done here, or can you do without it? And that's, I'm always glad to have that conversation because, you know, a lot of times, even though it may not be a technical conflict of interest, the public may still consider it one. And, and I think you need to be aware of that. So, all right, questions? How did I do, Chris?
Did good.
Forty minutes.
Anybody got any questions for Jim?
I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Glenn.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome. And this isn't your last chance. I mean, call me if you've got a question. Send me an email, whatever you need to do. One other thing I would say that I didn't put in here because I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't put it in writing, but the fewer emails and texts you send, the less FOIA is involved. Because FOIA doesn't involve phone conversations. And unfortunately, in this day of technology, and, you know, where everything's headed, we don't talk enough. You know? We really need to talk more and type less. It's just, it's just a better practice as much as you can do it.
I'm much rather prefer the telephone. Whole lot safer. Thank you, Jim.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we will recess and go to B75, where we will meet with the Farm Bureau, and we will, if you got your stuff, take it with you. Take it all with you because we will recess from B75 until our January the 16th joint meeting with the school board from B75. We don't need-